Okay, I talked to my bank and they said it's not a check, it's an automatic payment. And they gave me a tracer number. And they said because it was cash, it was accepted. And so it's somewhere, I mean that money is somewhere. And so they gave me a tracer number for both of them. And they said that that tracer number should be by the person who checked for a reason. I'm in. Yes, gave away services. Okay. Yeah, I talked to my bank. It was an automatic payment, it wasn't a check. And so they sent me a tracer number.
What day, let me see, what day did they send you?
October 17th and October 27th.
Seventeen, so it's not the long box then?
No.
On the seventh or the sixteenth, what'd you say, sixteenth?
Seventeenth, October 17th.
We don't have another account. Maybe somewhere else.
Charlie.
Yes. That's where these payments are all on. Because it's associated with that address.
That's what happened before.
Because when they do that, they have an account, when you do that, you enter your account number and it always associates unless you change it, that's your account number. So let me see. Okay, yes. So. Have you talked to 2015?
Yes.
So you just. Here's your old account, how long have you been using? And you're going to turn it off. And here's these two payments. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to transfer these to your account.
Okay.
And I'm going to go into electronic upload and try to disable this account.
Okay.
So. And then the next.
How are you?
Yes, and we're worried that it could kill the customer.
Yeah, because I just.
Okay.
On which?
Yes.
And so there should be, there should be no more checking. And this hundred thirty-one dollars, your bill is six hundred and sixty.
Right.
So the next bill is going to have to be a double thirty.
Okay.
You'll see it come out, you can pop it out of the cash. And pay the bill. And you'll see.
Well.
Free balance, you don't have a credit.
Yeah, that's the idea. But I mean, you gotta, you gotta fund it somehow. How are you paying for that? From balance or are you reducing your?
So if you set it up, it turns auto pay, it'll owe you.
Okay. Nice, well, that works.
So I'm going to, just for my own personal, I'm going to pull up your what if drive account. Follow up on December four to make sure.
Does it have any balance or do you think we've had any balance?
Yeah, and it does.
Okay, were you working on town? Okay, so when is the town? Today's the second. Yeah. Okay. You're leaving today tomorrow, though. You might as well work pass down and work from home by the way.
Oh, Mr. Guy isn't here yet. I'm here.
Oh, if you were stuck, then you can get back to work.
Sunshine, yes, because he always says he's set up his laptop.
Didn't think that all, didn't think that all would be true, did you?
Well, that's why I'm on the side here, but I saved it, saved to my laptop.
Did you put color in your hair?
No. This is the way it looks without color.
Oh, the quick text.
I, it's pretty.
I have a red hair. Red hair, I hope it's been strawberry.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, let's see here.
Okay, Terry. Hopefully faster than doing now, because they're due pretty soon. And you're going to need to do a budget. Okay.
So I'll go.
Really?
Okay. And the.
It really isn't. I knew you used to put into an article.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not crazy. I'm going to put in the stuff for this time. I'm not totally stupid, though.
Oh, you can mention it.
Wow, that's some rig.
I could do that. It's in our books. So today is only the two.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm.
Okay. Just admiring the TV.
Yes.
That's some rig. I want to go sit near it.
I love it because I can pull it out and push it in and turn it and. Yeah, now we can't see it, though. I like the bigger.
Well, you have it in front of you.
Yeah, right in front of you.
I know, but I like the bigger screen.
That is for the audience.
Okay.
It's pretty nice, though. It really is. See, now you can.
So what kind of questions? What kind of questions you want me to ask you today?
Uh, just the easy ones.
Okay.
We can do the hard ones another time.
Okay.
What about joint meetings and be able to broadcast over there for people who want to, for you, once you have to, you watch on your computer?
Well, no, 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 that's going to be all this stuff.
See all our security cameras?
Uh, we can't do both?
No.
Do you have a bigger one?
Because we're adding, or we just added stuff to the soccer fields and.
Oh, cameras and stuff? Okay.
And then I also, I can, I can see them all from my computer at my office, the pool. I just go into the IP address and I can bring them all up. See what's open and.
Do you, this, will get a lot of use during the week when school's in?
Um, there's.
Is there any?
Fair amount, I, I wouldn't say it's excessive.
They have exercise on Monday and Thursday and Saturday morning. And there's usually at least twenty-five women there.
Yeah, is it, what is it, an exercise?
It's like a.
Is it the, with the?
Zumba or?
No, it's.
Water, water aerobics or something?
They did used to do the. Mm-hmm. But yeah, that's in the morning. Of course, and then when the northerners come and we vacation times when the kids are out. Now it varies.
I was assuming that's.
It varies, yeah. Yeah. Well, this should be all set. I already got a headache. I, we just got an email that Paula and them, are we located?
We're, we're moving.
To a different building?
No.
Oh.
We had, we had a huge office, it was like ninety-seven hundred square feet. It was one of those old efficient, you know, everywhere you turned, it was a wasted space. So we told our landlord, we don't need all the space, cut it like basically in half, renovate the other side and we'll just move over there. So we're doing that tomorrow.
Cool.
So we're moving into like an open space concept.
Yeah.
Brand new everything, it's really nice.
That's how Gardner is. That whole very contemporary, open space.
Yeah, so we're going from like ninety-seven hundred to like fifty-eight hundred. Get a bigger kitchen, you know, it's just nicer, so.
Look at what he mentions, bigger kitchen. I mean, that's on the prior.
I didn't even mention the best part.
Oh, God.
TVs.
Oh.
So we put a TV in there for them. We put a TV in, in our conference room, big TV, we put TVs in their training rooms, so.
And what are you going to be watching?
ESPN. What else is there to watch?
Astros won.
Astros won, good for them.
You know, Gardner's concept is they keep their employees on site. A lot of the new companies are doing that. They have a gym, they have a cafeteria, they think they might have a daycare in a different building.
Yeah.
They make it very.
They're, they're, most companies are kind of in between. You see a lot of companies that are doing more remotes, so people can work from their houses. Or others that are kind of got that campus, college campus mentality.
Yep. Well, see, that's a whole younger crowd. Different generation. Different generation.
It, it cycles through.
Yeah, it does. Our web developers, who I love and I think they did a great job. You go to their office, it's like psychedelic, those lava lights, you know, it's way out there. And the one girl is in her office with hair dye all over her hair and around her face. She's dying her hair while she's sitting there looking at her.
She's dying her hair while she's working?
Yes.
That can't be good.
That can't be good, no.
Because you get, at a certain time, I thought you, you don't take it off, it dents your hair.
The salon was right, like in their thing, so she just.
Good one over there did her thing, came, that is pretty cool.
There's Mr. Guy.
That is pretty cool.
But I, I was just shocked, you know, how often do you see that?
See, I don't like open space because that's too much noise.
Mr. Guy, how are you? You called me?
I said I'm.
Oh, I thought you said.
I appreciate.
I want a.
I've never had.
Paper. Eighteen bucks that I can carry around.
Sure. I will. I certainly will.
I did work. But it was your quiet attempt. But it was. Sometimes they do.
Stay in. How you doing? Long time no see. I know. Without the budget season, it kind of gets boring, right? I noticed the last meeting, no one sits in a chair.
He gets a shake, hand shake, ah, you'll get it.
Sorry. Now I'm in trouble. Now there's more questions that you're going to ask.
Oh, now.
I'm just going to pull everything off the consent agenda.
Would you like some help?
I would, indeed.
Oh, hello there, Ed.
Hi Diane, how are you?
Did you get, you did get your paperwork, right?
Yeah. That was a ton of reading.
I put it on big paper for you.
Thank you, I could read it.
Okay, now let me see what I've written down for this. So I can add more.
Add more.
Did you?
All the numbers are good, just, just say that.
Talked to my daughter in upstate New York and it snowed on Halloween. I heard, three inches, what's snow?
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
That's common.
It is common this.
You're talking north, you're talking north, yeah.
Yeah, I've been gone too long.
Okay, let me see. Halloween. And we speak on Thanksgiving.
Four B.
Oh, I remember big.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah. Do you take these or Chris?
Chris does.
I write their names down so I can. Okay.
What do you do with their names? Do you call them and ask them questions?
No, I write down what they talk about. Okay. Right, okay, got it. Have you had this open? Have you had it open?
Yeah. Yeah, I've been trying to make it easy for us.
Why can't?
It's not nearly as much fun for you, but, you know.
Oh, there are dogs, so if you want to slow, whether you're trying to. I'm thinking, what's going on?
Here's where you're at, so you want it to be at or below. Well, the general fund as a whole understands.
Not everything going with you.
Oh, I, then I don't have. Just so.
You do?
I didn't.
Oh, well, it's, I mean, we are not too bad, but. Because I read it. I went to one with my mom. And then the storm, we're rebuilding.
So if you look at the page.
You know, Bo's place. A lot of our stuff, our outbuildings were destroyed. Our outbuildings, like we had a potting, we had to rebuild and plan and, you know, we do a lot of growing and. That was totally destroyed, our maple tree fell on it. Our, the well was shattered, totally collapsed by the tanks, by the.
So if you look at the total expenditures.
Mm-hmm. And we had an outdoor shop facility.
Total expenditures. That was the annual budget. The district spent one point nine.
Oh, okay. We're getting ready because we have a big.
Part of what we will do is.
A big one?
Yeah, the reason why musicians come from all over the United States, state property. They come in with huge RVs and camper.
Where, if we live?
He lives in the Glades, the other Glades.
You're still under spec.
I got hit head on at my house. No, I was writing a kid, he got hit on his head on down there. We both had family. You know, it, it could have been a lot worse, so we're okay.
Two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and sixteen.
Okay, so we don't know what we're going to do with that?
Well, these are still uncharted credentials. So you never know if invoice from an engineer or attorney along with this fiscal year comes in, we will still put it into the correct fiscal year, but.
So we have to move this money somewhere?
You don't have to move the money anywhere because it's already going to be in your cash reserves, your general fund. But you don't automatically spend that money or have to approve spending any of that money because it's not budgeted for this year. But it's there, doesn't go anywhere.
Almost set a new track record with the thickness of that deal, what was it, two hundred and eighty-four pages or something?
It was a lot.
Oh, we had books bigger than.
And the majority of it looked like Stevens' stuff.
He's ignoring them.
It had to have been a hundred pages of his stuff.
Okay, so what we have to do with it? There, I remember when I first started working here.
So it's important to ignore.
There were sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
There were so.
That was, well, it's because they put all those stupid invoices in there. That was the dumbest thing I've ever seen in my life.
That was some.
Now, that department that you.
When I was making the books. Okay.
So it's a hundred and two percent is misleading a little bit because it's a very small part.
Yeah, the other one was a hundred and fourteen. Okay, just so I know what, what. I had that question. Here you go. Are you outside?
I didn't bring the computer.
Okay.
I just tried to go with the flow. If Chris is operating it properly, I'm up to speed, otherwise I'm dragging behind.
No, I don't touch these things. He says here, please do not touch equipment, I do not touch the equipment, I follow my rules.
Sounds like a good elementary school teacher.
That's right, thank you.
God, did I get here this early? I told the guy from Lee County I'd wait till two twenty-five for him to call. He don't want to call.
I used to have a boss that said if you're not early, you're late.
That's exactly right, that's the way I do stuff. I absolutely, I've got two people on my HOA board, they come into the meetings and we have meet at nine o'clock. It, it's like they stand outside for eight fifty-nine, fifty-nine. And then sit down, what a bullshit. And then when it'll go over whatever's going over and have all the news and the convincing. Said do that before the meeting. Crazy.
I was so surprised to see that fire station going up on Gateway Boulevard.
No, that's not the fire station, that's the kinder care. Fire station's the, fire station's the blank lot. And fire station, the blank lot, then the kinder care, then the restaurant.
That's what happens when you're driving and trying to look at the same. It's a Michigan tie to the left.
Some would call it a Notre Dame tie.
Oh, yeah, there you go. It sure is a Florida State. James, do well, Mr. Guy, how are you, sir? Ohio State, so. Let's share it for those Buckeyes. Never. I'll, I'll tell you what I think of the Buckeyes.
If they're, if, if they're a cat and had nine lives, they just used them all.
I heard about the game, I didn't watch it, but I heard about it.
I watched it, I couldn't believe it.
I heard about it. I mean, what, they're eleven down, wasn't it?
Penn, Penn State, Penn State went into their two-minute and what do you call it, controlled defense and got burned again.
What was it, they were eleven points down?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Fifteen or sixteen, yeah.
Holy smoke.
Did you still have trouble with Worthington taking over those wetlands?
When Timber Creek comes in there, we'll just let Worthington have those wetlands.
Because they have all the permit stuff and ready to turn it over to those.
No, the only choice, the only thing I had on those was the.
Split it?
Was the, did we check them out and make sure there's no exotics in?
Yeah, I think I'll.
If we inspected them already.
Should we put them on the next agenda, how's that?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm going to ask you two things. You want to initial off on that? And for all this billing for Danny for your DRC calculation, which is a little over two thousand dollars right now, what exactly have you gotten for that?
Well, you verified.
I'm walking away from this guy.
Verified, well, I did.
Oh, okay.
Because it's probably saved us ten thousand dollars of having him do the whole damn thing. Besides that, I've got a confidence that it's correct this time. Because I did it.
Okay.
And Chuck checked it. Chuck found a couple of typos.
Sounds good to me.
You know, I'm coming to the conclusion, but not yet finalized, there's not an acreage issue, it's, they need to finish the bike path and easement. But that's, so it really isn't.
Well, it's, you have to go show me the math of how you come up with two hundred and thirty-five acres of park.
No, no, I'm not worried.
We haven't got that.
No, I'm not worried about parks, acreage. It's not the acreage issue, it's whether or not what they have to do in this area. Because.
Well, is the legal description for the whole FPL easement, just the part that's between Griffin and.
I don't know, because they don't give me a survey. You saw that, they won't give you a survey.
I don't get this. This just isn't that damn difficult.
No, why don't, why they won't, anyways.
Why are they out there clear cutting and cleaning all the exotics out when for twenty years we've done nothing?
Because they.
Because they can't transfer it to us if we don't.
Probably, yeah, because, and that's why I was doing the path, because in the, in the DRI, it requires them to build. And it's referenced in David's email and then it's also, or Colwell's email to you and then it's right here. And it doesn't have dimensions, it just says.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And if you look at the master plan, this puppy.
Well, you can figure this.
This is a bike path. All that.
Yeah, all the way to Griffin.
Which, well, and they can't do that, that's utility side now.
That's the county.
Correct, so they can't do this part.
Can't do that part.
But they're supposed to do all this.
Yeah, and this, for the most part, is done except down here to the deal and we still have an issue of how we handle this ingress, egress and exit part.
So, but I, you saw in the email, I mean, my letter, to take this without getting an updated survey. You saw that.
Why wouldn't they just give us the legal survey of the property?
They don't want to do it, it's too expensive.
That's an easy survey. That's all my issue.
Well, I think we need an altus survey to show encroachments and everything else, because I don't know what's on there, what's, you know.
And where would there be any encroachments?
The neighbors, side properties, some improvements may encroach on the other property.
Into the FPL easement?
Either in or out, God knows, you know, when they were working on stuff.
Well, we need to get it resolved, but that still doesn't.
Oh, the acreage is a mess.
Identify the issue, the acreage issue with the parks. Where's that two hundred and thirty acres of parks we were supposed to get?
But it's parks, well, it got reduced.
To one eighty-six.
Correct. And it doesn't add up.
It doesn't add up.
If you look at the acreage from parks on this.
Yeah.
It, it really doesn't add up.
I know it doesn't.
I mean, it's worse.
It's my question.
We never know.
What do we own that we don't know about?
Oh, no, no, well, some of the parks was supposed to go to Lee County, twenty-eight acres was supposed to.
Where did you see that?
It's in the DRI.
I didn't read that.
Yeah.
In this? I didn't see that in there.
Yeah, it's, it's later on, there's an amendment, the fifth amendment.
What's the, where's twenty-eight acres?
It doesn't say that it is.
Oh, come on.
No, no, so I'm going through old minutes, okay? And I'm trying to piece it all together because the old minutes are even sort of, as you know, they're not exactly in model clarity. But I mean, here's even a conversation back, this is not, I'm not done yet, but this is a, a, this was back when they were doing, when they were talking about the linear park.
Who's Mr. Russ?
Uh, he was the person making the presentation on the parks, that's part of the Gladys Jackson thing back then.
Yeah, the FPL one hundred and seventy-eight, I would agree, that, that's about the number I came up with.
But the parks are, you know, the linear park is in, I mean, it's.
Well, the linear park, I thought was the entire FPL easement.
It's not, according to this. There you go.
There are one hundred and seventy-eight of power.
Is the size of linear park all the power is, and he said, no. There are a hundred. So I'm, I'm getting there, Ed, I thought I was there, but.
Well, surely when they did the DRI, there was a map or something to identify what it is.
It's this thing.
That's the FPL easement.
And there's other parks outside of it, too.
Well, I know that, I added all those up, those requirements, those were no brainer.
Well, and.
But when I add those to this, none of them, none of the combinations equal the total.
I agree, even David admits that in his email to you.
That's close, though. Have some funny.
Close, hell, it's off 30 or 40 acres.
So anyways, from the linear park perspective, I don't think it's an acreage issue, it's more, did they do it?
Well, my, my whole thing is, is that was the intent to transfer the entire FPL easement between Griffin Drive and Gateway Boulevard to Gateway?
Yes.
As a park.
The intent was to transfer it with the bike path in place. It's a patrol road.
Understand, but is the entire 660 feet width, the whole way, part of our park system?
I don't believe so. There's a couple of documents that have legal descriptions, like one's 87 acres, and it calls it linear park.
We'll see now.
Phase one.
Would they have done that to satisfy the complaint for park?
The DRI, that's part of the whole question.
I think what part of it is, is if you deduct out the ponds.
I don't think they did, though.
If you deduct out the ponds, then the acreage starts to fall into place.
Yeah, I don't.
The way I read that DRI, that whole FPL easement from Griffin to Gateway was intended to be our park.
Well.
660 feet wide.
And again, there's another document I'm waiting for, it's a referenced unrecorded agreement. And it talks about 85.6, it's subject to three.
I'm not listening to any of this.
So that's the question, and then there's this one here, look at this one.
It's a private conversation, Bill.
Phase one. So I mean, I, I think when I read this document, it is may tend to that.
What, what, what do we have to do to get everybody in one room and get this resolved?
What I'm gonna do is, I'm just gonna call David up. Okay? I, I need one more document from them.
Well, they're obviously clear cutting it and getting all the exotics out of there.
They're required by the DRI and the.
For a turnover.
Absolutely. And that's what I mean, they want to propose a.
And I have no problem with taking it, but I don't want to take it until.
We need a survey.
Well, yeah, but even if we had the survey, I don't want to take it until we got all that other stuff cleared out.
We need certificates from Lee County.
And then we have that 60-foot easement that you sent, all that paperwork.
Yeah.
To me, that's carton wash, we got it.
We need, we may need to have it assigned by Worthington, that's all, it's a simple thing.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's all.
I saw that.
And John's good to work with, they have no use for it, so that's my, I'll just give.
Because it was dedicated to Worthington.
It's an agreement.
But then there was a statement that it would be handled at a later date or.
May permanent, but I'm okay with it being, I'm, I'm fine with it, you know, as long as we get that assignment. But I'll give it to David on that, but we do need to have commitments, certificates from Lee County that they've complied with all the requirements.
Oh, which one?
On the FPL easement, as far as, you know, bike paths and declaring and all that stuff.
Well.
Before we take that over.
The, the bike path is not totally done.
Right, but I'm just saying, before we take.
But the problem is, whose bike, whose path is it? Is it ours or FPL's?
It's a, if you look at some of the.
Is it joint?
One calls it a patrol road to be used as a bike path, there's an agreement between FPL.
So FPL has access to it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one of many agreements that's in this. Mr. Guy, how are you, sir?
I'm good, sir.
Is it warm in here or is it?
It is warm.
Okay, well, I'll.
I know.
This is warm.
Well, I know, tell me about it.
I know.
Usually I don't.
I understood he called.
Yeah, I mean. Your first few days of the week, I was wearing fishing shirts.
Well, the thing is, if you read the book, it's not even a requirement. It's not even a requirement. They should have called, they should, should have called those guys and told them, you know, that it was happening, because it cococked them. Yeah, I, I heard about it. Well, well, remember two weeks ago when we approved that for 69,000 dollars? I said, that is one hell of a deal you guys got. I thought they were vacuuming it. They were just pumping it out to the middle of the lake. I, I'd have known that, I'd have said something right this.
Are you sure you've taken it from here to there?
Instead of taking in.
Taking it out.
Sucking it out. They were putting it, and pumping it out to the middle of the lake. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, who's this? Do we know you?
I went by a building called Gartner, and I was looking for some guy named Mr. Van.
I'd fingerprint him because he doesn't look like the guy that used to sit here. I'd fingerprint him because he don't look like the guy that used to be here.
Are you gonna be, they're building across the street to go south of New York, right?
Yeah. Land over there, I'm not sure exactly the total amount of acres.
You gotta get it up front.
Oh, yeah. Well, there's a longer term plan to.
Big campus over there, too?
We just run that as best. So Gartner buildings, one through two here, and then there's, uh, commercial properties.
Hey, neighbor.
We have our county center. Or we lease a whole other side.
Oh, yes, secret squirrel stuff. I've been accused of that before.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Those things aren't cheap, if you can get it done here.
There's ongoing, the largest ongoing topic is parking here.
So parking garage time? Is that what it's, because they're not too dear.
Well, you got a natural over there. Go, go by from the FEMA, that tent they just put in, and you got right move-in facilities.
We actually lease a large parking lot over there, and we have for years.
Oh, the old terminal?
Over at the old terminal, but.
Well, some. Nobody wants to be over there, no way.
Yeah, it's too far away. Yeah, what are parking spaces going for now, about 37 grand each in a parking garage?
Did anybody see this headline today?
Only 78. Pelican Marsh had 80 in July, so.
Yeah, what's, what's, what's more, what's more amazing is, is that last year was the wettest season ever.
So this year.
Pelican Marsh had 80 inches, as I'm told. You know, before, before, remember, can't sure.
I'm gonna carry this around with me for the next month or so.
Blow it up.
Get T-shirts printed up.
Yeah.
Gateway Service District.
Because people are saying, saying I was crazy when I kept saying that.
Ever.
Since, since last year.
When I saw the cost for parking space for a parking garage in Naples, Doug, like 37 grand.
No, thank you.
It's amazing.
Here's the sweet tooth, he'll, he'll take it.
Everybody wants us to. How are you? Good to see you.
Oh, I'm fine, thanks.
I don't eat those things.
They want you to. Really?
Yeah, because it's so expensive. Or they want to do a really extensive, multi, multi-year.
That's a big.
It goes outside of our threshold.
That's a big number.
Yeah.
I mean, that's. You can use it for partially water management, though, I guess, right? Some places do, they put the water management underneath, but even that's not. Pelican Bay, the parking garage there is an underground wall, that's a use for the water retention.
Yeah, that's what they did at the forest, too, but it was unintentional.
Oh, yeah, what a mess that was, twice.
Four, four feet of water in the pro shop and the cart barn, lost every one of their carts.
200 units, too, got nailed, I guess, right? 200 homes?
Well, that 10-mile canal's gotta be dredged, that's all there is to it.
I'm sure nobody's gonna go up to Lee County for that, Ed, seriously.
Uh, nobody did.
I've talked to two congressmen.
Welcome, Stephen.
They're not doing their job.
Oh, no, no, they haven't, I mean, that's what's amazing, they both start shops in Hartford.
Did anything I need to worry about?
It looks like a big worry to me that I.
Oh, is that going there, too? Oh, oh, with 82?
It just sits there right now.
Oh, with 82 expansion?
Out that way.
Oh.
It just sits, it's a big lake.
Did you see this?
There's no place for it to go.
It's like a boat, in other words, ooh.
All's, all's I know is it could go any direction, but it ain't coming south.
That's the key.
I saw that headline this morning, I went, exactly what we've been telling everybody for.
They gotta take it into their canisters. And the problem is, they don't have the network to do it.
That's Eastfield County, isn't it?
Yeah, well, whatever lehigh is. I think, I think the biggest problem is that they gotta make water go uphill, and it doesn't go uphill very well.
Unless you have pumps, and, yeah, that's expensive.
Yeah, you can, you can make it go a long way up hills with a phone. There's a lot of it. It's almost a mile.
Seriously?
Yes. Almost a mile.
Like mile north?
A mile along that road and then back in maybe, oh, what, three, four, five blocks.
Oh.
It's a lake.
It sits there?
Yeah, it just sits there.
Oh. Wow.
The dry spots, the dry spots, the, uh, cemetery.
So when they want 82, how are they gonna take care of that additional impervious surface?
That's what I'm wondering.
No, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, because they're gonna go up to do it, and they got, they got a big right-of-way there.
Well, my guess is that the side ditches along that 82 is, don't, don't, don't go off because they're gonna be deep.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because they're, but they, and they, yeah, but they also have.
You know, that has an advantage, though, you could rent a gondola and take it to work.
I mean, it's a good start for mass transit.
The river. Riverboat.
Just don't touch the power lines on the south side, as you're pulling along, right?
Yeah, we'll just ground them into the canal.
Well, yeah, because they have those pads, too, don't they, for the towers, don't they, and, you know, kind of come along those canals? I don't know if you know, there was old gunnery ranges there, too, if you ever look at the aerial photographs, you see these funky shapes, you ever seen those, Ed?
That's on, that's.
82?
Yeah.
Oh, and it's not that far.
I thought the gunnery range was. Yeah, it's up there past the high school.
It starts right around Daniels.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, on the south side, and that's where they had those.
That's awful close to be having a gunnery rail.
That was from, that was from World War, you know, Page Field.
I hope it's BB guns.
No, that's the old, uh, area from Page Field, from World War II.
Is it me, or is it hotter than a dickens head here?
It's hot in here. No, that's the old, uh, they had the rail system around for the fighter planes and bombers. My father-in-law was a tail gunner in about 29.
Now, watch, half an hour will be freezing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, my father-in-law was in the Army Air Corps, and during training, you hit an officer, and they gave him a choice of position, either B-29? Tail gunner, tail gunner or tail gutter.
Tail gunner or bottom gutter.
No, he was tail gunner. I saw, I mean, that's, that's a miserable position, too. I mean, once you were there.
You, you can't get out.
No, no. I mean. Yeah, he had a little bit of a temper.
Is his name Trump?
No. He's a good Oklahoma guy.
Yeah, Clinton News Network is trying to take him down.
Oh, yeah. So if I was to.
One minute.
What happened to the fence on the golf course, Ed?
Hurting.
But the metal part like that, I mean, but it was open, I mean, that's.
It knocked down 500 feet of Hammock Cove.
Ooh. I'm thinking because it had so much room between the slats.
I like it gives me an easier way to walk on.
Play six holes.
You don't have to worry about hurting yourself.
Just make that loop. Play six holes and come right back.
It's nice not to have to worry about hurting yourself, right? Yeah, Ed, see this, here we go. Shoot, see this here? Come on. Let me zoom in here. Gosh, where do we go to, ahead?
Okay, it's 3 o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you have one of these on you, please turn it to silence so we don't have phones ringing during the meeting. And join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if anyone out there would like to address the board, uh, there's forms to fill out in the back, and you can hand them to Mr. Shoemaker, he's the gentleman with the.
High school site, I guess, I'm.
And I will call the roles. Our district attorney, Mr. Pierce is here. Supervisor Tinkle, supervisor Banks, supervisor Feinberg, supervisor Dunn, supervisor Clarity. Our district manager, Mr. Shoemaker is here, and our accountant, Stephen Williams is here. In the back, do we have people that want to address the board?
Yes, we have two speakers today, and the first would be John Payne, Timber Ridge Drive.
Hi, again, my name is John Payne, and we live in Timber Ridge, this is a neighbor of mine. We have an issue between Daniel's Preserve and Timber Ridge. There's a fence all the way across here between us, except right at the end of the lake. And we have a lot of people come through there, going to 7-Eleven or playing basketball or whatever, and, uh. They fish in our yards and it's clearly not allowed with our, you know, association, but they don't listen, it's becoming out of hand. And I'm wondering, the question is, can we build a fence near the end of that lake?
It's Daniel's Preserve and.
It's Daniel's Preserve and, uh, Timber Ridge.
It, it would, Chris, would it be in the LME?
I'll have to look, I'm not familiar with that.
We have tons of fence in the LME, and if we have to work in there, we'd just take them down. But at the issue of who builds it would be a HOA issue, not a CDD issue. Your HOA would have to install the fence.
I talked to him yesterday, he said it was, uh, you people that were in charge of fences.
I'd try the same thing, but that's not the case. I've tried that, I've been on the other side.
It's a council ball, yeah.
Yeah, it's an, it's an HOA issue if you want to put up a fence in your area, but the only thing we gotta do is just make sure that it's not restrictive to the, uh, lake management easement, which we have dozens of fence in the LME, and if we have to get in there, they just come down.
Yeah, no, there shouldn't be any issue, but like you said, there's fences all around, except right there, and that's where everybody comes through. Through our backyard, and they become abusive and, you know, and challenger. Something needs to be done, so I'll bring it up with me.
Could I show you your math a moment, sir?
Yeah, sure.
Hey, Mr. Payne, I'll pull the original engineering plan for that subdivision, just so we can take a look at what's on the end there and just find it, you know, whose property and where the LME is and.
Yeah, the question would be, why would they have terminated the fence and left it out, other than the LME? That's the only thing that makes sense.
We'll find out.
But we have, we have tons of fence going across the LMEs that, that, that doesn't stop anything. Just the only issue is, is that if we have to go in there and do work, then the fence might have to come down to be able to, to, I, I can't picture it being that big of an idea.
Just like you, so we talk. So that's the lake?
It's between Daniel's Preserve, must be right in here.
And there's a fence here and here.
That Daniel's down here?
Yeah.
It's just me right here. We talked something.
It's gonna be right there.
Okay. Oh, so they cut through to get to. Southern.
Who's your property manager?
Um, Bob.
What's?
What company?
What company?
Oh, you mean the property manager?
Yeah. Tropical?
It just changed name, it was Castle, and then it changed names. The name was Neos.
Not Tropical?
No.
Not Lion?
No, it just changed hands a little bit. Okay, so, I take this up with the board?
I, if I were your position, I would go back to your property manager and your board, let them know to coordinate with Chris. But the issue of who would put the fence in and everything, that would be your HOA that would have that responsibility.
I mean, I think for nine years, we brought it up with the previous board, and nothing was out of them. Recently, it's got a lot worse. And where I live on the corner, they come over, they come through the fence and come walking through. And my husband works away a lot, sorry, and late at night, you know, I don't want to have these people walking through my yard fishing, you know? And I say, I'm extremely polite, you know, and I say, "Do I know you, sir?" And they'll say, "No." And I'll say, "Will you respect my property, that not fishing in my backyard?" And a lot of the time, they'll say, "You can't stop us." And I'll say, "This is my yard, you can fish in the common area if you live on Timber Ridge Drive, but if you don't," which you don't, because I've seen you come through the gap, you know, and it's quite obvious that there's a huge gap there. I just don't know why it was never, you know, done right the way across. And it just seems to be getting worse, and they're affecting, and they're being abusive, some of them, you know?
We've had the same thing over Gateway Greens, so we put up the fence. That's all you can do.
Yeah.
The thing is, it's clearly in our association that we cannot fish at the back of anyone's property. Article 50, it's telling that, and if they have season, we do what we want.
We even passed a rule to that effect about a month ago.
It's the HOA's, yeah, it's the HOA's issue.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for your time.
One more speaker, Mr. Phil Meesey, wanted to talk about Agenda Item 5B and D.
Phil Meesey, Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. I live at ninety-two, ninety-six Trias Drive in Pelican Preserve. I have read Darren McMurray's letter of October thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, to the board concerning Pelican Preserve transfer of assets. While I have limited knowledge of the statutes and regulations governing such transfers, I suspect that Mr. McMurray makes some valid assertions in his letter. From its perspective, there are issues that the Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee believes the board should consider in making its decision concerning asset transfers in Cypress Grove. Most importantly, there are assets related to the roads that are to be turned over that are not covered by the Permit Criteria Manual, and thus do not appear on the District Engineers' punch list. These include deficiencies in the condition or installation of monuments, lighting, landscaping, some of which give rise to safety issues as well. While it is true that the P-PAC came somewhat late to the process of reviewing these assets, we raised concerns about some of them over a year ago. The question that arises is whether items that were not included in the official turnover inspection process, but are not in reasonable condition or result in safety issues, should be accepted without some provision for correction for the problems that have been found. If this occurs, Pelican Preserve residents will be burdened with costs for corrections that the P-PAC believes should be paid for by the developer. In addition to the items above, the P-PAC has also done its own inspections of certain assets covered by the Permit Criteria Manual, and found numerous problems with roads and curbs. There are also required ponds-related inspections for which the P-PAC's Ponds Work Group has not seen any results. P-PAC believes that there need to be provisions to address these issues as part of any turnover process. The P-PAC thinks it should be possible for the board and Lennar to develop a reasonable accommodation to expedite the turnover process by including stipulations that address the concerns of Pelican Preserve residents, including timeframes in which deficiencies will be corrected, to protect the residents from shouldering costs that should rightfully belong to the developer. Thank you.
Yes, go right ahead.
Phil, at this point in time, what recommendation are you bringing forward to the CDD?
Well, Bill, I don't, I don't know that there's any good way to do this, but it would seem to me that one process that we could follow, possibly, is to have a team of people representing the CDD, P-PAC, and the developer, go out and look at all the properties that they want transferred, and make decisions about which things need to be corrected, and have an agreement as part of the transfer process about those items that need to be corrected, and when they will be corrected, because timeframes are important. Very often, WCI has promised things, and it just goes on forever until it just dies. So I think we need to have everybody identify those things, because there are things, I think, hopefully, that even Lennar will agree, need correction before they're transferred. And if we can get some kind of a stipulation or agreement that they will be fixed, either pre or post-transfer, then I think we could put ourselves in a fairly satisfactory position. So that, that would be my recommendation.
I'm reading your comments, which mean you're not recommending that we accept the transfers of these properties at this time.
Not until we have some agreement as to what needs to be fixed. And Lennar has said, "Okay, we'll fix these things." And when, when the transfer was made at the last meeting of Materita 2A, I guess it was, there was, you know, there is a provision in there in the, in the bond money to, to correct some of the curb problems. We discovered that in that particular case, there are no substantial landscaping problems, so that was not an issue. But there are landscaping problems, there are other problems in some of the other areas, and I think there needs to be, at the very least, even if there is a transfer, some kind of an agreement, that things will be corrected by the developer, that are the developer's responsibility. I understand that if it's a maintenance issue, maintenance is the responsibility, or will be the responsibility of, of the CDD. But in cases where the original installation of the particular thing, or, or the way, way it was done, is not correct, that needs to be corrected before we accept it, or before, or it needs to be corrected afterwards at the developer's expense, one way or the other. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
To me, our problem is, is that we don't have a good delineation of typical construction-related terms like substantially complete and fully complete. Typically, on projects I've been associated with, you have substantial completion. At the point you have substantial completion, a couple of things are met. One, the product is usable. The second thing is, is it sets up a time for a punch list of things to be taken care of, generally ninety days. Then you go into full completion, the contractor's paid off, and the bond covers everything else. Our problem is, we aren't going through that process. I don't know that we have anything to allow us to go through unless and until we make a change to the Permit Criteria Manual. At this point in time, the bigger question I have is, Tony, can we legally accept these facilities, pursue it to the bond, and have conditioned on that, or attach to that, a list of the deficiencies that we have identified at the time of acceptance?
Exactly.
In other words, it's, it's a cover your you-know-what?
That's right, exactly. And if we could do that, and not only have what needs to be corrected, but when they will be corrected.
To me, that's a happy medium.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at the bond to see, to make sure we're not waiving any right as to that list of deficiencies. If we're accepting it in a condition except for those deficiencies. And by the way, typically, in these conveyances, there's a bill of sale for the improvements, and there's a one-year warranty for any defects.
But the problem is, and this is the nightmare we have with this...
Enforcement of warranties.
No, well, yeah, but even more importantly, are the things that aren't mentioned. Landscaping, monuments, things like that, those things are, right now, are in Never-Neverland.
Exactly, because they're not covered by the bond, are they?
They're not covered.
Well, one way possibly, and maybe, and I don't know if Lennar or WCI would be amenable to, is when you make that list to get them to agree that, and the items you're talking about, the monuments, the signs, and landscaping, all be covered in the bill of sale and in the warranty.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to know from the bonding people that when we take a bond of, let's say, Casella 1 and 2, are, is that bond inclusive of those things that may not specifically be mentioned that we have checked, i.e., landscaping?
Probably not, because the bond is typically tied to the schmittel made to the district of, in our approval.
Then can we request a bond for those items only, then? In other words, we'll take the, the stuff, but the other items that are, we're being asked to take over, we want a separate bond for, if they're not inclusive?
If they're not included, if they're not included in the current bond.
If they're not included in the current bond.
And I'm going to ask you to hold your thought on that, because this is on the agenda, and we're kind of getting ahead.
Okay. I want to just get in ahead of that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak?
All right.
Is there, regarding a non-agenda item, can I speak for just a moment?
You have to fill out a card out. Speakers in the back.
After the fact.
And do I wait? Can I get some time, then? I'm not sure what that process is.
Just fill the card out, come on up.
Yeah, come on up, get it over with.
There, you can stand up there and give your name and...
Okay, my name is Chris O'Hern, I live in Pinewood Lakes. And the only reason I was asked to come today is to just try to get a feel from you guys as to how we're doing on the expanded RV storage facility. We have, I think, twenty-two spots right now for a community of, I don't know how many, we have four thousand residents. And I understand that we have something like sixty people on a waiting list willing to pay the money, and it's been set up on the website. You know, there's a certain square foot, linear foot, all of that. We've got sixty people wanting to pay that money right now to our group, but we don't have a spot. So we're sixty, I think, somebody, Vicki might know, I don't know who Vicki is on our, in our team here, but she said there was about sixty, I think I'm sixty-three on a waiting list. And in this facility, I think there's twenty-two spots. They haven't, I don't, do you guys know anything about an expansion, or are we going to expand that park? Somebody talk to me about maybe throwing something behind the park.
I'll just address it quickly.
Sure.
And Danny's here with Tetra Tech, and they've been working on a permit for the drainage and for that facility, and I believe if it hasn't been submitted, it'll be submitted in the next few days. Board has not budgeted the construction money for that yet, but it'll take about sixty days to get the permitting.
So sixty days for the permit, we got to figure out the money part, how much is it going to cost to put fences around it?
Well, we have a pretty good idea, they've done a preliminary design, and it's...
Is that public information, what that cost is?
I don't think it's been totally...
I'm just doing some math quick, like sixty people at a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Yeah, we've gone through all the math. We've gone through the cost analysis, and looking at price and variation. So, just to fill you in, there's been, this has been an ongoing evaluation and design. So we're at a point now, we've had cost analysis justification, kind of a business case. Tetra Tech has come up with a couple of different design options. So we're in permitting now, and the next step would be to just approve a final design element, and then, and then get moving from there. So we're, we have a plan in place, it's in motion. What's TBD is actually when it would be approved and construction would start and be completed.
Any clue, you know, just for us planning, because we're having to make arrangements for RVs and trailers and boats and stuff to be put into other facilities, not here in Gateway, only twenty-two people are allowed to do that here. Do we have a timeline, I mean, with years, early months, or what, what, I mean, you said sixty, and then we knew ninety on construction? I mean, just any feel, you guys, is it a two thousand eighteen type of deal, or is it going to be two thousand twenty-nine, or?
Mark, you want to?
Somewhere in between.
We're going to default to Mike.
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager. We are, that was one of my items today, just to talk to you about moving forward with the, the design and you getting the concurrence to issue the check for the development order. To answer your question, we don't have that money, we don't have the construction budgeted right now. So, I mean, that would be something that the board would have to look at, or we look at budgeting that amount next year, but we don't, we don't have those dollars budgeted for the, the construction of the, the facility out there.
And that said, that's, including the monies that's lost every single month right now that are not constructed, that's going to other storage facilities, other communities.
I'd say the best case scenario would be, it would be twenty eighteen, you know, earliest would be, you know, probably Q3, end of next year, or twenty nineteen. But more will come in probably the next month or two as we finalize the budget, so we'll be able to pinpoint a timeframe, because it'll be, have to, dollars will have to be approved, and we put on the plan for twenty eighteen, and we'd have to sequence it as well. So if you can just be patient for another month or so, if you're looking for a plan, I'd say plan ahead for at least the next six months.
Okay. And then will we be able to get up to speed, or just show up at these meetings, or?
Yeah, we'll provide an update.
Rest, or?
Yeah, sure.
And I'll be on the website or something, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Do you want me to pull this up?
Please, thank you.
And I think we can update that as we move forward with the development order process, and then just talk about that on the website. We can put something in there concerning that.
Did you guys identify a play store as well, right here?
Behind the soccer, the last soccer.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it.
Oh, sorry.
It should have been...
I was reading the budget. District engineer.
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech, District Engineer. You have an updated task memo, which Mrs. Flaherty asked if we would continue to bring this before the board, so if you have any questions on that.
I'm sorry, I did hear that, Danny.
Just, the only item we have in here is the memo that we prepared on our task, so if you have any questions on that, I don't think, I whipped through it last time, it's just simply updated. What you'll see in green is, at the top of each task is the current status, and then I put action items in red. And this is essentially where our project stands.
I think a question I've got for Chris, and maybe Kenny, is, are we in a position on the hydraulic modeling to go out and get that information to be able to complete that model, because that's certainly a critical item? We're in a position to do that?
Well, I think where you sit with that is, that hasn't been authorized, so Chris needed to review the...
Who has to authorize it?
Well, board authorized a contingent upon Chris reviewing the previous model information, and that's, that's where that sits at.
That would be to finish the twenty-fourteen oh-six portion, and then it's an additional project to update all the new developments since that time.
Yeah, I think the key that I'm hearing is, is that you can't do anything more until we've provided that modeling input information, is that correct?
We can't do anything until we have authorization. I don't have an authorization yet.
But, but if you had an authorization, you have to wait for us to give you the information to continue the work.
There is, there is some work that we can do. I mean, infrastructure's been put in the ground since that model was...
Oh, that's right, we had to give, we had to put that in.
Right, but, you know, that's probably, that's a minor part of that, of that project.
There...
But, but certainly, the, the data collection, the pressure data, and the calibration is what will take the time, because, you know, we'd like to see the pressure data over, you know, a week or so period, and we'll probably want to move those, those pressure points to a couple of different locations.
Well, on the basis, then, that I'm not hearing staff saying anything that they're not going to perform that modeling and that calibration information, then I see no reason why we wouldn't go, want to go on ahead and proceed with the authorization of this work, then. So I'd make the motion that, at least for that item, hydraulic modeling, that...
I don't think you need to make a motion, the motion was made at the last meeting, it was just contingent upon Chris reviewing the...
So do we need to do anything?
No, it's just Chris needs to finish his review, and then if he's satisfied with that, then just need to authorize us. But, but to your point, staff can certainly move forward with putting, you know, the data loggers in the field.
Well, we're, we're going into the triceason, and the irrigation systems are going to start popping on and running, maybe one of these days it stops raining. And we need to be in a position to know where that water's coming from and where we have shortages. Last thing I want to do is have a line of people coming in complaining about pressure, like we hear almost every year, on the irrigation system. So if we have some deficiencies, we need to know it. The loop line we put in certainly has to be inputted, but on the other side, the two major lines that were put into Pestoia and Pareto, that's going to impact us up on that end, so we need to get that study going as quick as possible.
Yeah, I will, I'll say that, you know, the time is good, probably, you know, even a month from now will be better as far as the irrigation to get pressure information, because while the...
They'll be on.
While it's in operation, yeah. So, if you have any other questions on the memo?
I do, I have a question on, did we, did we lose the November meeting on the lake bank?
No, we, we saved it.
We did save it?
Yes.
Okay, I want, I wanted, I'm glad to hear that, I was concerned.
We're good there. We, um, we had a lot of discussions with DEP and expressed, you know, how important this was, so they've, they've got it on the agenda. We've met with Mike and gone over comments, there's some additional work that he wants us to do. I think we talked about it at the last meeting, where some of that includes getting some bathymetric survey, so we're actually still waiting on price from, to perform bathymetric surveying of those additional ponds. So as soon as we get that, we'll be able to finish that work up. But no, we're, we're on, so we've, we've saved that.
And Chris, can we, can we take this, this document, and if you can add to it where, you know, where it's assigned, so if it's a, it's a utilities piece, we assign it to Mike, and then just update where we're at? Because I would imagine you're going to, some of these need to go through kind of your review to be either brought back to the board for an action. I see there are some comments, but if there, if all those actions are under, under your oversight, then that's, that's fine, but it might help us stay on task with where we're at with these individual items.
And part of why, and we can do this monthly, we can do it for each meeting, we used to do these, and then, then the board did not want to spend the money for us to prepare these. So we can do it monthly, we can do it, you know, every meeting. But part of, of why we brought this one back, we had it at the last meeting, part of why we brought it back at this meeting is, is Mrs. Flaherty had, you know, pointed out that some of the items that may not be happening, where we're waiting... pointed out that some of the items that may not be happening, where we're waiting on information, that if it wasn't something before the board, then if action needed to take place, then-
Yeah, I agree, we need to, we need to go to action and check these things off, or strike them out as we decision.
You had a comment?
Yes, I wanna thank you, Mr. Nelson, I do appreciate this report on the tax, I think, because it does keep us informed, and I really would like to continue this.
I think monthly is probably adequate. Just to keep us up to date.
Sorry.
What you need, go ahead.
Yeah, the one addition I would make is, I just, I just wanna know who's, from a staff perspective, who's, who's owning that particular item, and get an update on where we, where we sit.
Just let the staff comment.
Yeah.
I mean, I, if you, if you want, I can add, you know, who the staff-
Yeah, just coordinate with Chris and-
Danny, on the Pelican Reserve stormwater database, you say Tetra Tech is holding awaiting documents from a developer, what are you waiting on?
This is just from their completion of inspection, so it's, there's really nothing on that item, it's just, it's just a data entry item, but. Outside of that, if you don't have any more questions or comments on this, we did have a meeting this morning with the South Florida Water Management District. Really, we wanted to hold a meeting with them to talk about, now that, you know, a month or so has passed since Irma, and since this was the wettest year recorded in the history of Southwest Florida. We just wanted to talk about-
It was the wettest wet season ever.
Wettest wet, according to the paper, yes.
The wettest wet.
Yes.
To quote.
To quote, yeah.
So, you know, we, we obviously saw a few things from this, this past year. The good thing is that, you know, I think what a lot of residents don't realize, who aren't in the business, that don't, don't sit on the board, or they don't sit where we sit on dealing with drainage systems, is I think somebody comes to buy a home, especially in a community, they know that it's designed for stormwater, so they expect to see dry everywhere except in the ponds. What they don't realize is that your roads are designed to flood typically after a five-year storm event, and so I think a lot of people are now realizing that, but when you sit down with, you know, your developer, you sit down with your real estate broker for that developer, I don't think that's something that's really, you know, commonly shed to the homeowner. So, um, so the good news-
You mean the realtors don't tell them that?
And I'm not saying that they should, I'm not, I'm not blaming them, I'm just saying it's not their business, so it's not really something that, you know, no.
Something like, having a boat would be beneficial?
So, you know, given that, and given that we had somewhere between, well, we had the wettest wet year, and we had somewhere between a twenty-five and one-hundred-year storm event, just eight, nine, ten days before we had an actual hundred-year storm event. Systems aren't designed to accommodate, you know, back-to-back storm events like that. So, all in all, our system really did perform, you know, well, but even with that, I think we saw some things that could be improved, some things that were part of the original design concept, but that never were part of the original permit, and that is putting in gates to allow you to let water out during a storm event. So we did talk to the Water Management District about that, as well as some related items with downstream conveyances and, and restrictions, such as I-75's culverts, tree line, and then the issue that happened where flow backed up from the airport through the future Timber Creek area and into Cypress K. So with that, they definitely are amenable to allowing gates to be installed with two, two caveats. One is they would wanna see modeling performed to show that if water was released, that it would not have any downstream impacts. And two, with that, we wouldn't have the authority just to go and do that before a storm event, especially before a rain event, you would do it before a major storm, and they would be part of that decision, which I think is, you know, is fine, again, this is the wettest wet year we've had, and it functioned, so I think their ability to participate in that was good. So I think at some point, if that's something that this board wants to consider, then you would have to look at doing, developing a model to model that there would be no downstream impacts, and then go through the permitting process to install gates. Now, the benefit to that is, in addition to having, having the gates, this same model would tell you what kind of issues you might have at, at I-75, or possibly a tree line. And, you know, the, the Water Management District acknowledges that when these, when the basins were set up back in the eighties, it was more or less a projection of what they felt that boundary was, and for our case, it was fifty-two ninety-nine acres. That's now increased to seven thousand, that's a significant increase, and we're trying to push all this flow through two forty-eight-inch culverts at I-75. So it would help us tell, help tell us what problems we're actually having there, so.
The real interesting thing on this, and they couldn't explain it, was is that people here talk to people that are around this area, and a lot of the people around this area live in Arborwood and Pelican, or Plantation. They were dry as a moan, and we both go in to Six Mile Cypress. And their deal is, why? Well, the one thing that we have in common is that we both go under I-75. And it's interesting, the size of our I-75 opening and their I-75 opening, when you consider that we're maybe as much as three times their area. So there's things that we, we need to look at, and other parties are gonna be involved, and they even indicated that what we need to do is probably get all these parties, Lee, Lee County, for example, one of the issues that we brought up today is, is that we can sit here and do all kinds of miraculous things here, fixing our system, and there are things we can do. But if we can't get the water into Six Mile Cypress, it doesn't do any good. So I suggested, and got my head handed to me on a platter, of dredging Six Mile Cypress slough. Well, that must be something close to hallowed ground, because the environmentalists aren't gonna let you dredge that slough. But they did indicate, they're working with the county, and we need to talk to them, of Ten Mile Canal, that's man-made. So if we can get Ten Mile Canal, perhaps we can get the water out of Six Mile Slough, get it down to Estero Bay, and we in the forest and all those people down there on South Forty-One can get rid of this water. But the one thing I pointed out to them today is, just because these things were designed to flood, or bad word, back up in a five-year storm, doesn't mean it has to, doesn't mean it has to. If we can take and put in conveyances to, to, to avoid that, for example, Hampton Park, lowering the weir, today it was like a, a, a new revelation to them that the basin that we went into wasn't the basin it was designed for, it's a foot lower. So we could take a foot out of Hampton Park right now. That foot was the difference between those streets being up there being a canal and being dry. So there's things we can do, and they were amenable to listen, listening to it. But like Danny says, it is going to result in the need of redoing the modeling that probably should've been done in Gateway the minute we found out that that airport property was coming into our community. We should've, well, first of all, we should've screamed like a pig under a gate, ever even allowed them to put those culverts in, but we didn't know it. Now, our engineer knew it at that time, but it, it happened. Not them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, for the record, you need to make-
Our prior engineer, yes. And, and he, he fought it, he fought it.
They fought it.
They fought it, but they lost, and we suffer. The water that goes out of the airport goes out at elevation twenty-five, we're setting at elevation twenty-four, you tell me which way the water's gonna go?
Is it feet?
Feet, elevation twenty-five. It's, it's not gonna go out there, where it's gonna come through us, and that's exactly what happened in these last two storms. And it, it killed us at the school property, which was underwater, and it killed us at Timber Creek, which was underwater, and all that came into Gateway. So we just, we gotta stop that, so. But they were unamenable, that was, that was big, we got further than we've ever gotten before with them.
Once again, the meeting between the district, representative engineering, Pelican wasn't, after Jordan made aware of the meeting, we would like to be apart from the meeting. Even if we're told not to talk, we wanted to have a seat at table.
Well, the meeting was kind of impromptu.
If there's enough to give you an idea.
Absolutely.
Call to anything you may.
So that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Jim, you had a comment quickly, please, so we can, we need to move on to district council.
I'll be very quick. Thank you, Margaret, Jim Brand, Hampton Park. I appreciate the comment about the design was set up so that our streets and our yards were flooded, were, would flood. That is the design for a five-year twenty- I lived in St. Louis in nineteen ninety-three, and we had a five-hundred-year flood, a five-hundred-year flood. We had lots of people lose their homes. A five-hundred-year flood is a lot different than a twenty-five or a hundred-year water. We need to have our systems designed to meet a five-hundred-year criteria, not a five-year, not a hundred-year. The comments about adjustable weirs, about capacity underneath Interstate seventy-five, getting canals dredged, that will help make that happen. Giving you all the authority to lower weirs when a storm's coming, we don't need another bureaucracy on top of you. You guys have all the talent and all the capacity necessary to make those decisions. We don't need South Florida Water Management District telling you, oh, I'm sorry, you can't lower the weirs, that's not acceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. District Council.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, the first item is a discussion and possible consideration of the board giving direction for preparation of a policy concerning the acquisition, placement, maintenance, and use of automatic external defibrillators, also known as AEDs. And this was an item that was first brought to the board, my memorandum was back in two thousand sixteen, basically the end of two thousand fifteen, almost two years ago, and it was discussed at that time, and the board at that time did not make a determination to go ahead. And I think that since that time, passage of time and passage of events, there's been an interest in bringing this topic back up for possible consideration because of the positive aspects, there's negative, I mean, unfortunately, as I mentioned, back, back in January two thousand sixteen and other board meetings, the Florida Supreme Court has taken a statute meant to protect people and kind of turned it on its head, unfortunately. And that's that Lamone's case that you saw, that came out of Lee County. And if the board decides that it wishes to have AEDs at the district offices, or at the district, at the commons, the recommendation is that there be policies in place, adequate training, and that's what's key, acquisition, training, and maintenance, making sure it's accessible, the cabinets are locked, the batteries are operating, the machine is operating, because that's where you get into trouble if you can't use or attempt to use the AED. That's where you lose that second layer of protection under that one act. Interestingly, there was a recent experience, I was reading, I think, or NBC Two or News Press a week or so ago, at a particular facility, I think here in either Collier or Lee County, where but for an AED, a person would've, you know, suffered a catastrophic event. So again, I'll link to the board for their discussion, and if the board gives direction to the staff, manager, and council, we'll come back with a proposed policy for the acquisition, placement, maintenance, and use.
Hey, Tony, one question, I think there was some additional documentation in what you provided. Was there something that mandated AEDs for, was it high school?
Yeah. Well, my recommendation is that, as to the Gateway Charter, it, I just, at times, certain plaintiffs' lawyers may try to make, create dots, connect dots that don't exist.
Yeah.
And one of them might be that, okay, the, if you're an educational system, an educational facility, and you have an athletic program, then you need to have these AEDs in place in your facility. Gateway Charter uses our soccer complex, and someone could try to argue that they then, they Gateway Charter would need to have, or AEDs would need to be available for the Gateway Charter folks during the time that they are using our soccer field.
Yeah, and that's-
Not the other, other organizations, but it's Gateway Charter.
That's the point of clarification I'm looking for, is, does the, the whole high school athletic organization, or the, whatever the sanctioning body is, does it, does it specifically call out that at an event where they are the host, doesn't that necessarily have to be on their facilities or away? If they're the host, are they required to have such devices on, onsite?
See, I have to go back, I didn't go back and reread all of that.
And you need to take that away, that's-
That's fine.
If you don't have that answer today.
Well, why can't we, with our agreement with them, just require it?
We could.
Be done with it?
That's what my point would be.
We could.
If, if we determine that it's not a, a direction that we wanna take, if it's mandated by the high school.
Well, yeah, a school-sponsored sanctioned activity, that's when the first-
They would have to provide it.
Correct.
I was just trying to determine what.
Yeah, and in that instance, the Supreme Court interpreted the act that, you know, could create untenated liability for the school-sponsored activities at their facilities. And in this case, because they're using ours, someone could try to extend it further.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Seeing this, I called the country club, because we added AEDs around the, the golf course, at the restrooms and at the maintenance facility, and in the clubhouse itself. And the issue that they pursued was the insurance company, and essentially the insurance company said, basically what Tony just said, we didn't, we're cheap, we didn't spend the money on going to a lawyer, they said the same thing, one, you train, and two, you maintain.
Yeah.
And with that, didn't have any issues whatsoever, so I think that we probably at least check with our insurance people to verify that, that they, they're gonna say the same thing, but I see no reason why we wouldn't go on ahead and do it, with the exception of the school, we put them on notice that pursuant to what you have furnished us, it's your responsibility to provide those, even if it's duplicative, facilities during your events.
So are you, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Tom.
Madam Chairman, I feel strongly that we should go ahead and, and pursue this item and purchase these AEDs. I know for a fact that two board members sitting here have taken, have taken the training within the last few months, and at least ten of our staff have taken it. The training is much less valuable if you don't have AEDs to, to, to help a person that's in distress. You may have read in the newspaper that, about that gentleman who was playing handball or something.
Racketball.
Racketball.
That's correct.
He was probably saved as a result of the AEDs and a teammate that knew how to operate them until the professional EMS arrived. And you also may remember that about two years ago, the person actually expired in this room. Now, I'm not saying that he would've been saved if we'd had him, but I can't say that he wouldn't either. Anyway, I feel strongly that we should, that we should pursue this.
And what are we talking, a pool, this building, and?
I think the pool in this building is-
Soccer.
Soccer.
You wanna, you wanna put one in the-
Yeah, I think we should have, well, the, the school's a separate issue, we have things that are, functions over there that are not school-related.
Does everyone have-
The Christmas party, for instance.
Does everyone have access to the building over there?
Well, again, that gets back to, if the board decides to acquire them, that's when we would come back with a policy as to acquisition, placement, maintenance, and training.
Okay.
And we'd work with the insurance carrier, back when this issue first arose, we had conversations with the insurance carrier, and they didn't have any real issues, again, subject to training, maintenance, and placement.
Bill, you make the motion, I'll second it.
I was gonna support Bill, as a former nurse, I know that how important that is, and I have seen it save lives, so to me, it is a, something that should be put in here.
Are you gonna make the motion to proceed?
Sure, I'll make the motion to proceed.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And what we'll try to do is, I'll work with Chris, see if we can come back in the next board meeting, but more realistically, maybe the first meeting in December, just to have a good conference of plan. As well as getting with Mike and his communications with Gateway Charter about them being required to have those facilities.
One for, excuse me, are you finished?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to interrupt you. One for the thing, Madam Chairman, if I may. I'm assuming that the district manager knows which of the staff took that training and is carrying a certificate with them, is that so? If you, if you don't, you can find out, right?
Oh, yeah, I would have a real good idea if it's down in New Haven.
Okay, so we oughta, we oughta know who our, who our certified staff are.
And Tony, as, as we're looking, or Chris, as we're looking about the policy, we can, we can manage our own training and policy within what is district jurisdiction. When we're looking at the charter school, even the leagues, we probably need to have some conversation on whether they would either opt in for, for certification. I don't know if we can require them.
Under a field usage agreement, arguably we could, with the leagues, which is up for discussion today.
Well, would that also, I mean, there would-
Gateway Charter, it was less, it has more of a casual- Gateway Charter, it has more of a casual, there's not a formal agreement, I believe.
Well, my point is that's, I mean, there's, if you're mandating that someone else facilitate a potential life-saving or could be in the other direction, that poses additional liability and risk on the individuals that are assuming that responsibility. So I think we need to at least have some conversation.
Well, conversations, and they may already have that program in place, because if they're engaging in sanctioned activities at their facility or elsewhere, I'm sure they, because the protocol's required by, I just rechecked the statute, they...
Yeah. My point is, let's have conversation with the league leaders and the high school before we come to a conclusion on what we're going to mandate.
We'll come back, okay, as part of what we come back with, well, because Michael's had conversations with the league sponsors, and we'll have those between now and the first meeting in December, and report back to the board at that time with recommendations.
Good point. I just don't want to make it look like to them that we're accepting their liability. If they're supposed to have it, then you do it.
But we're also telling them, you know, potentially, that they have to maybe assume some risk and responsibility that they may not be comfortable with.
Well, then they know where to use their facilities.
What I was going to say, you may not want to use the facility.
I'd like to hear back from staff about placement of one over at the soccer field, because you need to make sure that it's available to the leagues over there. But the worst thing that I think we could do is put one over there and then have it locked up to where nobody can get to it.
Well, that's exactly what happened.
That's a big problem.
You almost have to put two, one in the back concession and one in the front.
And that's exactly the basis for one lawsuit in Kyler County I'm familiar with, because I know the deceased's wife, I mean, she was a former county commissioner, her husband died on a basketball court. He was like 42 years old, and they ran to get the AED device, and it was in a locked cabinet, and nobody had the key. So that formed the basis for litigation. So that has to be accessible. But that gets back to use or attempt to use, to be afforded the protection. So that's part of what we'll come back with for a policy.
Because you can't just have it out in the open.
Once you see the details, then you can decide how you want to proceed. But at a minimum, I think from the standpoint of the district offices and the pool complex...
Definitely, I would say those two.
Okay. But we'll come back with the overall policy, and then you can decide.
The kind of lock that I've seen and used is the one that breaks, but it's locked in it. You just have to, well, it does break easily, but...
And again, we'll explore, we'll come back with what's available, and once you have a proposed policy, that'll detail that. Thank you. I think it was, the vote was taken, I think?
Yes.
The next item is...
The Girl Scout.
The Girl Scout Building is an update to what you have in your packet. I've heard, I know some of the board members may be aware, some may not be, that I provided another update to Mr. Ellis last week with regards to the efforts that have been made by the district to obtain the PUD Amendment. And I'll just hand this out to you. This was, I don't believe I emailed it to you, I may have or may not have. This is an email of October 27th to Mr. Ellis, where I advised Mr. Ellis, who's the attorney for the Girl Scouts, that we had the disclaimer and release signed by Lee County, and they were getting ready to record it. And as to the PUD Amendment, we've had no further communications with Lee County, no additional letters of no objection, and that Pinecrest Community Association voted to not provide a letter of no objection to the PUD Amendment. And Michael, I assume by that also, maybe for the record, that the residents, Mr. Draper, Mr. Cecil, Ms. Baker at least, have not provided letters of no objection. Is that correct? And they're not planning on providing them?
For the record, Michael Tisch, Public Works Manager, there were several residents who did not provide the letter of no objection. We had revised some of the documents, the church, and one of the residents provided an updated letter, but I believe Miss, one of the residents was willing, she was in the process of moving, and never provided the updated letter. And then two of the other residents adjacent to the proposed Girl Scout Building acquisition would not sign it. I believe Mr. Banks was also at that meeting, so I think he could kind of address the sentiment of the Pinecrest HOA.
Out of the four, we've got consent from one, one is selling or in transit, and then there's two that have not.
As far as property and residence, in addition to the association, correct?
Yeah, in addition, residents only, that's out of the four.
And to take the quick route through the county, it had to be 100%.
Correct.
So right now, it's DOA.
From the standpoint of the administrative amendment process requires letters of no objection.
From all.
From all, including the association, correct?
Correct.
So then that means that we either go through the tedious process of filing and waiting up to maybe a year?
Right. We would then have to go through the complete rezoning process that would take somewhere between nine months and one year.
Or we look at other options.
Yeah. I mean, just to say that, I wasn't disappointed with the understatement with some of the board on this issue. And it seemed, in the beginning, it was about whether who owned the roads. And there was probably a 15-minute conversation around who owns the road, as opposed to whether zoning, whether the zoning...
Whether uses was a problem.
Yeah, whether they would accept zoning, you know, the acceptance of the zoning. And then it really, when they started talking about the actual acceptance of the zoning, I felt like there were several board members that were operating or acting more on what their personal position was on whether the district should be purchasing the building as opposed to the overarching decision on whether zoning would be accepted or not accepted. And then there was also conversation on whether, in that process, whether the Pinecrest HOA would relinquish oversight as part of the Girl Scout Building being in their HOA, which I didn't know if that...
It's not in their HOA.
Yeah.
Well, that's...
Not in their HOA.
That was part of the conversation, is whether or not they would allow, if the district was in that building, to release us or them from their HOA governance or oversight, which was really confusing throughout the whole thing. But, I mean, to kind of summarize, I felt like the conversation was more geared towards whether it was the right decision for the district to purchase the building, as opposed to making a determination on whether the zoning change was accepted by the HOA. And I thought that was a little misguided.
But at the end of the day, the key issue is whether or not they provide the letters of no objection from all the adjacent zoning property owners to go through the administrative process. And as an aside, my recollection of the title work, when I reviewed it, I did not see any exception for any deed restrictions applicable to the Pinecrest neighborhood. I would have raised, I mean, I do not. But the decision point for the board is, if you recall, included in the agenda package is a Second Amendment to the contract, that we have until November 6th to be satisfied as to the PUD Amendment issue and the disclaimer issue. The disclaimer issue has been resolved. I mean, that's, the title company's happy with that, and I'm happy with that. The PUD Amendment, though, it requires that it has to be, we have up until November 6th to obtain a PUD Amendment satisfactory to us, admitting the PUD to allow, as a permitted use, the use of the property for governmental office administrative complex. And so the choice for the board is to authorize a notice of termination due to the inability to satisfy that particular contingency or cure that particular issue, or see if the seller's willing to wait another year minimum, and then we go through a full-blown process.
We terminate. What's the dollar value that we have in escrow that we have subject to loss?
Well, there's a $15,000 deposit, and I would argue that it's refundable because of this cure period.
Because the...
The cure, the defect not being cured. Now, that does not mean they would not dispute that, and so they may. Once the demand is made for the return of the deposit, they may argue a number of reasons why they believe we're not entitled to have it back. And if there's litigation over that, it goes in the county court because of the dollar amount. It's 15, it's not over $15,000. But you never know what people will do.
I thought moving forward, we kept making sure that we weren't going to lose that.
Once again, we were taking the steps to engage in the necessary due diligence, but that does not mean that they can assert that we did not. You can, and they can try to argue that we did not. In fact, we were giving them the weekly reports and showing with the... It's never guaranteed that somebody's going to say, yes, take it, and, you know.
And...
I'm comfortable, I'm confident that we would be successful. I can't guarantee that, but I'm comfortable and confident that we have done what we needed to do, to try to attain and resolve those two items during the cure periods. They may dispute that, and if they wish to, then we have interplea action in the county court.
I think it's time to move to Plan B.
No, I'm not so sure about that. If you mean, forget it.
No. Plan B. Look at other options.
In other words, cancel this.
Cancel this.
Is what he's saying.
What are you saying?
The purchase of the Girl Scout.
Cancel the purchase of the building. We cannot meet the county requirement in going through that one-year process. We've got issues here that we got to get resolved, and there's no sense screwing around with this.
And Tony, let me...
What year, excuse me, yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Why do you say it's a one-year process?
I've not been involved at all in the zoning aspect. Tyler and Michael were. It's because you file the submittal, you go to the hearing examiner, the hearing examiner makes a recommendation at a public hearing to the Board of County Commissioners, and then the county commissioners take action. That's the timeframe that Michael and Tyler have obtained. Like I said, I've not been involved in that zoning process at all. Is that correct, Michael?
I remember that conversation, Mike. But in this case, please correct me if I'm wrong. We are muddling around in this thing because Lee County made a mess of the zoning for the building that's been sitting on that property for 20 years or more.
They approved a mess that the developer created.
I'm not...
Is that right or not?
I won't characterize it that way. They allowed the construction and use of a building that now they are, back in the 90s, that they're now saying it's in a no-man zone, I guess, basically. Is that a fair statement, Mike?
It's not zoned.
For the use that's currently there.
And remind me again, what is the actual...
Let Mr. Guy finish, please.
When I was in the governmental business, if I threatened under the table to embarrass a governmental agency, if they wouldn't move our petition to the front of the room and hear it right away, they would, in likelihood, especially if the seller, prospective seller, was with us, holding our hand, they would in all, for almost every time, move our petition to the front of the room and hear it right away without your one-year business. I think that's the position that we ought to take and try and move this thing forward expeditiously, because this whole thing is a mess that the county made, and they're hurting two or more parties. Thank you.
Now, the, what we have is, we're pushing up against a deadline that we had asked with the Realtor and the Girl Scout.
November 6th is the drop dead date.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but the hearing examiner has to, is going to be contacting the same people that we have to try to get these letters of no objection, and they have a right to go to the hearing examiner's meeting when this is heard and voice their opposition.
The county sends out letters to everyone within a certain radius of the property. Those people are informed of the hearing, they're welcome to come and speak, but at that point, it becomes what allowable uses are. They might have objections, but at the end of the day, that party and that property will be rezoned with several of the items that are on that list that they're not going to be happy with.
Yeah, I guess what Michael was saying, from the perspective of, right now, the residents and adjacent property owners have a veto power over the easier process, because they have not signed a letter of no objection. When you get to the hearing examiner, you have to have substantial competent evidence to make a recommendation as to whether or not the zoning district should be changed. The fact of, I don't want an office building, is not a good enough reason. I don't like that building, I don't want the, I think they will use it for all these other horror story reasons, is not a good enough reason. Or I think there will be increased traffic. I think there will be, they have to have articulatable facts that the hearing examiner will look at and listen to from experts, planners, possibly traffic engineers, and others saying, and the county staff appears to believe that the change in the zoning district and uses is appropriate. And so I would assume that they would make a similar recommendation to the hearing examiner, that the property be rezoned and the district, you know, be modified to accommodate this use. So it's not that the people won't be heard, they'll be heard, but they can't, it has to be competent substantial evidence that they provide, other than I don't like it, or it doesn't fit in. They have to show how it's inappropriate.
Right. So what is...
So I guess the question is whether or not, if we have a favorable recommendation from staff, and if the hearing examiner, and if nothing else happens down the road, it makes a favorable recommendation, if it goes to the county commission, the people can still go across to the county commission.
Because a year seems like a long time. Surely, this could be done sooner than that, or is that...
The process, it's a, remember, it's a quasi-judicial process. You submit your petition, you have so much time to be found substantially complete with your submittal, then they schedule you with a hearing examiner, which is months and months and months in advance, because there's already so many people ahead of you. And then you have your hearing, the hearing examiner then has, I think, 45 to 60 days to write their report. Then after the report is written, it is then scheduled before the Board of County Commissioners, which is another several months down the road. So it's not a quick process. It's a very long process. It's time-consuming.
If I'm hearing Bill, Bill's saying we go the political route. My question is, who do you go to get, who do you go to to get that decision reversed?
Here's, there's no decision to be reversed. Again, if we have to go to the formal process to go to the county commission ultimately, the county, Lee County uniquely among counties in Florida, has an anti-contact, anti-lobbing issue, a prohibition on any zoning and land use quasi-judicial matters. So once, basically, once the game is afoot, as they would say...
What's what?
The game is afoot, then they are not able to participate in any ex parte outside the board hearing communications concerning the zoning application.
And Tony, can you remind me again, how was it zoned today?
Let's see, I have to go...
Do you remember, Mike?
I don't. It's actually kind of fuzzy.
Let's see, I have to, I mean, try to repeat. I didn't have to bring the entire file. Bear with me just a minute.
It was zoned as a Girl Scout building, net use only.
Well, no, and to Mr. Guy's point, what's interesting is, those deed restrictions, as I said, that were there at the time, Lee County blessed the deed restrictions, because Lee County had enforcement rights under the deed restriction. So that's one of the documents that we got rid of, was those deed restrictions that WCI had disclaimed the interest in them, but Lee County arguably still had enforcement rights. And so that was resolved. And so it is kind of interesting that, and again, let me see, Tyler's report, I'm trying to think of, if I can find the memorandum on that.
Why don't we do a DBA as the Girl Scouts Community Development District, GSCDD?
I mean, if someone were to come in off the street and not do their due diligence and not, they could have purchased the building, operated under the existing zoning, even though it wasn't appropriate.
The county would not allow you to do so.
Well, the problem, what happens is typically, and Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when you go, if you're operating a business, opening an office, you need to get a business tax receipt. It used to be called occupational license.
Right.
And typically, local government cities, counties have a zoning verification process. They want to know that where you're going to conduct your business is properly zoned for that business. So if I want to operate a tattoo parlor, and there's a prohibition within 500 feet of a church, say, and I go to get my business tax receipt to open up a tattoo parlor next door to a church, the zoning folks should say, you can't do it because of this prohibition and distance. So what should happen is, if someone else were to buy it, and they were to get their business tax receipt application, the county staff would say, oh, you can't, because it doesn't fit.
It's not zoned.
Arguably. I mean, and again, I'm trying to pull up the prior materials as to the current zoning.
Does that sound like an unlawful taking to you?
I'm not sure I can even answer that question of whether or not, no, because the county is allowed that... has allowed that prior use for years. The county could assert that that use of that property has been abandoned by virtue of not being utilized for X period of months or years.
Well, if I were the director of the Girl Scout of Sarasota County, I'd allege that the county or somebody was stealing my property, which is.
Inordinately burdening it or taking the property, and I won't let them make that argument.
Huh?
I won't let them make that argument. I'm trying to find, I'm sorry, I can't retrieve the materials.
Back to Bill's original point, is there, in your opinion, is there any alternative ways to escalate this process, other than going directly through the hearing, or is there a way to?
I've not been involved at all in the zoning aspect, Michael and Tyler have, and mine is, Mike's got the timeframe based upon his conversations with county staff, correct?
Right, county staff said that they wouldn't allow utilization of the building for what we want to do without either going through, A, the administrative process, or the full rezoning process.
And they're fully aware of how it's zoned today, and they don't have any consideration or any interest in being.
They're trying to correct this since of the past.
They're trying, they're trying to cover their you-know-what, that they've got a mess, and they're wanting us to clean up their mess for them. Has anybody talked to any of the county commissioners, because I'm very willing to.
Sounds like what he just said is.
Well, they may not be able to, that's the problem. I have to go back and double-check their anti-lobbing ordinance, but, you know, whether or not lobbying can occur, an administrator process versus a full-blown county commission process, I'm not sure. I mean, that's.
Because then they have to, when you go before the county commissioner, one of the things is, they ask if you've had prior communication.
Either disclose.
And prior what?
Prior communication.
Well, during, in fact, during the zoning process, if it goes to the board, they may not be able to have any conversations.
Or they have to disclose.
And I'm not sure where that point, I'm not sure where that line is, where they can't cross over, in other words, right now, we don't have an application in, but we've been working with county staff. Is that sufficient to trigger Lee County's anti-lobbing or anti-contact ordinance? I have not double-checked that. But I do know that once an application is in, they are not supposed to have any communication. Except with staff, I think with staff, they can have it with staff, but not with the applicants.
I'm back to square one. I think we go to Plan B, drop this thing and look at other options. I don't want to wait a year, that's for sure.
There is other commercial property available.
Well, yeah, probably right there, right next to us, and not mess with it, and then we don't have to go through this. Build our own building right next door.
You make it sound so simple.
Considering this, Bill, it is simple.
In this county, and us, it's simple.
We could put trailers out there.
Yeah, lots of luck getting those approved, too. But anyway, I see no future in going down this road with the Girl Scouts, there's no see it happening. Too many obstacles in the way, and nobody's going to turn and bail us out.
I think at this point in time, you know, for the Girl Scouts to sell this building, they need to cure this.
They want to sell it. They want to sell it.
They're not going to be able to.
Okay, I'll go out. I'll make the motion that we, effective November 7.
Well, it'd have to be earlier than that, the drop dead date's November 6, so.
Okay, November 6, I was giving it us all day, the 6th.
Yeah, and it would be authorized, terminating the contract with the Girl Scouts pursuant to the, due to inability to satisfy the cure requirements involving the PUD or the zoning.
Okay, terminate the agreement then, effective November 6, and we immediately drop this alternative of the Girl Scout building for office.
I'll second for discussion.
Charlie?
I like Bill's idea, but it doesn't sound like it's going to work.
Well, and my discussion point is.
You don't, you don't know that it'll work it up, you don't give it a shot.
Well, I think my point of discussion is, we terminate the contract because we don't, we're not going to be able to meet the requirements.
That part of the, that part of the motion I could possibly agree with, it was the rest of it that I didn't, I couldn't.
There's a second component, is do we continue to pursue while we are looking at other options? Because it could take us, it could take us a year to find other property, or if we decide not to do anything, or if we decide to build or expand here, whatever. It may take us additional time, and something miraculous may happen, and we might be able to fast-track this deal, which at that point, we would resurrect, you know, the deal. I'm not willing to quit on it.
I would, you.
So.
You know, the Girl Scout are a United Way organization, and the United Way's got all kinds of slack in the county. They raised, I don't know how many millions of dollars. If we, if we play this right.
I mean.
But we're not, we're not under, what do you call it before, below board, under the table, it's on the surface now. The only thing I don't understand, and I just can't figure it out, is why are we doing all this when they want to sell it? Why aren't they going to the county commissioners?
If your motion, if your motion is correctly worded, that's where it would go, back to. And by the way, Mr. Attorney, Constitution of the United States allows the citizens to petition their government.
The local governments have the ability to adopt anti-lobbing ordinances, so, I mean, and I guess, they would argue that they can petition because people can show up at the public hearing, but you can't do it outside the public hearing. Just briefly on the zoning, I pulled up.
I don't spend any more money on that, it's a waste to talk about.
I pulled up the Tetra Tech memorandum on zoning, and I think it's from April, if I'm not mistaken, and it references, April 25 of this year, it says zoning. Tetra Tech has had several discussions with the Lee County Zoning Department regarding this parcel, and the summary of our conversations are provided below. The zoning district, according to the original maps for Gateway, had this parcel in the, quote, "public school park district," close quote. However, the zoning resolution never defined that title as an actual district and what the permitted uses of that classification would be. This is a discrepancy that commonly occurs throughout Gateway and is not unique to this parcel. Basically, the graphical maps that were prepared for the original DRI and the original zoning resolution didn't match up and has caused issues ever since. The zoning department's stance is that although they're not objecting to the parcel's use as an office-admin complex, it was never formalized for use as that. Basically, the parcel currently sits in a zoning, quote, "no-man's land," close quote. As such, the zoning department is requiring a PUT amendment. PUT amendments can be done both administratively and through a public hearing, and then they go on to talk about the, what would be required for the administrative process.
So, it's public school park, could you house your Parks and Rec administration?
I don't know that, I can't answer that question, that's a county staff question, I couldn't.
Not a public school.
No, but it says public school slash park.
I don't know, I mean, we'd have to get conversations with the county planners on that one.
We can operate Parks and Rec out of there until we complete the zoning process.
Got the motion.
I have, and I know other people are going to have discussion on this, though, we had to actually kind of twist arms to get the Girl Scouts to agree to extend this timeframe to November 6, and that was with the idea that we were going to be able to get the letters of no objection, which despite our best efforts, we just haven't been able to do it. I'm of the opinion, at this point, we're not going to be able to purchase that building without getting this zoning changed, so there's no point in us pursuing this. If they can get the zoning changed, then I'd say they can come back to us and say, "Do you still want to buy it?"
Now, I would change my motion to allow that. They want to chase the goose, let them chase it, but in the meantime, we look at other options, not just sit here and do nothing.
But I don't know if it needs to be part of the motion, because that's something they can do on their own, I mean, we can just say, tell them.
Well, I need to change my motion because my other motion was just to terminate it.
I don't see anything changing, and we've got two business days, two true business days between now and the 6th.
Let them do it.
And I don't see anything changing between now and the 6th, I really don't.
Well, I don't either, but they're going to come to the realism that we're not in the game anymore of spending our money chasing this goose, it didn't get us anywhere. Let them go do it and see if they can pursue something, and meantime, we're not going to build a building over here, or anyplace else, or rent another building in the next 30 days.
No.
So, what's going to hurt?
So what's your motion?
I would withdraw terminating it totally, just as far as us doing anything else. We look at other options and let them do whatever they want to do.
After the 6th, we lose our money.
If we don't terminate it as of November 6, for the failure to achieve the satisfactory PUT amendment, then the deposit is.
Whatever we have to do to save the 15,000, or attempt to save the 15,000, notwithstanding the fact that somebody over there could try to come after us, but we've got some arguments on our side.
The zoning issue is not, is out of our control.
What I would suggest, the motion should be framed that the district, despite its best efforts and due diligence, during the PUT amendment cure period, was not able to obtain a PUT amendment from Lee County satisfactory to the district, amending the PUT to allow the uses outlined in the Section 702 of the amended contract, and that therefore, we, district would terminate the contract.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah.
And request the return of the deposit.
And then at the same time, we, while we're doing that, we look at other options, or start investigating other options, but let them.
That kind of goes without saying.
Yeah.
And then as part even as a.
Do I have a second for, on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I did second it. Do we need to withdraw the previous?
Yes, just for clarification.
I withdraw the motion.
You withdraw your second on the first?
I do.
Thank you. So that we have a correct.
Clean motion.
Clean motion on the table. And Kathy Flaherty seconded that. Is there any further discussion, anything else anybody wants to add?
I just want to add one thing that, in, sorry, Kathy, are you talking?
I just wanted it stated again, so, because I was writing it, and I didn't get it wrong.
I didn't write it down, I think we should go back to, they say it's authorized, due to the fact that the district was not able to, by November 6, 2017, during the PUT amendment cure period, was not able to obtain a PUT amendment from Lee County satisfactory to the district, amending the PUT to allow its permitted use, use of the property for governmental office slash administrative complex and authorizing termination of the agreement. Notice be sent with a request for return of the deposit.
Yes.
For that reason and any other reason in the country.
And my last piece of discussion is, to send a subsequent letter that says, you know, we conducted our best effort to do the zoning.
That's separate, though.
Yeah, I would suggest that they have this one motion, and then, and I can put in there, you know, our best efforts and due diligence, which is, and they may dispute that, but I believe we did, in my opinion, and then I think, we always have a conversation with them about, and again.
Future opportunity if they complete the zone.
I mean, I think it was pretty clear, I mean, when we extended this, it was really pretty clear that, you know, this was a deadline to try and get it.
Yeah, and we achieved the disclaimer, and we achieved the disclaimer, so we did some cleanup for them. I mean, that disclaimer to Lee County interests takes care of that title objection, so they have that at no expense to them.
Well, the one thing the Girl Scouts got to realize is that it doesn't make any difference whether it's us or anybody else.
Exactly.
They're going to go through this same gauntlet again.
And I've had that conversation many times.
So.
I'm going to call the questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I will have a conversation with their attorney, and I think, you know, with regards to what actions they may take in the future.
We would consider.
Madam Chairman, I have a couple items, if I may, just some handouts for future board discussion. On the FPL easement linear park, I thought I was getting close to the acreage issue, now I think it's more of a bike path issue, so, I was briefly talking with Mr. Tinkle about that, so, and it got a little bit more compounded when we had the request from Lennar WCI for the district to accept title to the FPL easement, and so there are a number of issues yet to be resolved on that aspect, so, I'll come back to the board.
You then?
Oh, no, for now, briefly, I have a, last meeting, Mr. Tinkle handed out a list of delinquent availability fees.
Got that.
And what I did, I prepared a memo on one aspect, on Santa Luz, just to hand out today and not have.
These are those utility accounts.
Yeah, utility account. This isn't for discussion today, it's not on the agenda, but I think it might be on a future agenda.
Is this a paper you passed out?
Yes, it's a memo just on the Santa Luz, and so, once again, not for discussion or reading today, but for the future.
Okay, well, I'm not only interested in Santa Luz, I'm worried about the other 29,000.
Oh, I understand, but there's others I wasn't involved with, and so, that's something that Chris and I will get with Leslie in the future, but this is just, my participation was primarily Santa Luz. Pelican Reserve, the golf cart issue, I drafted a memo, had some conversations with Mr. Meese, I revised my memo and sent it to Mr. Meese, so, we should be wrapping that up as far as my recommendations to P-PAC within the next week. And whether or not I get darts thrown at me or not, we'll see. And that's all I have in this. Oh, briefly, on the FPL easement transaction, I think I sent everybody a copy of my letter to Mr. Mann, where I asked him to provide for the transfer and deed-in of the lands under the FPL easement, and I asked him for a number of documents, and he came back and said, "No, we're not going to give you a survey, no, we're not going to do this, no, we're not going to give you a commitment." And I then sent to him correspondence from 2010, where I asked for the same items and never received anything, and that, in my opinion, I would not recommend that the board accept title to this property without all these other documents and materials being provided for review. And I found out the derivation of the phrase "pig in a poke," by the way, so, nothing else. A poke, a poke is, POQUE is French, like a bag, and so, yeah, anyways, so, that's, I've not heard any response back from Mr. Mann on my letter of October 27.
What are the, what is the downside of us not having, if they're drawing the line in the sand on a survey? What is the downside of not having that survey?
We do not, we will not know where improvements on the easement encroach on the other people's property, we won't know whether other improvements from other people's property encroach on the district, on the FPL easement area, and there might be objects and improvements on there that we are not aware of. I mean, we're buying a pig in a poke.
So it's, so it is a very reasonable request of ours to accept on a transfer a survey of this.
Absolutely, yeah, by way of example, when Lee County required the transfer of the roads, they required a survey, and we, and once again, it's a commercially reasonable request. It's not like a lake.
But we need along with that, we've got this issue that's outstanding of parks. We have no idea, Tony and I started about before the meeting, we have no idea of what we've got. We're supposed to have something by the original DRI, 236 acres of parks, that was then amended three, four years later to 185 acres. I dare anybody to try to find them. I have no idea where's it at, we may have land around here, we don't even know about.
Well, it may not be us, again, it doesn't require, it goes to the district, but I mean, I'll also follow up with the monitoring from Lee County, because, as you all know, when we asked WCI, and they refused, and no one required at the county level, that when they went through their amendments to the DRI development order, that they codify them as one document. And they have not, there are 11 different amendments to the original DRI.
Where do we go, because we're getting farther and farther away.
Community development, I believe, would be, and WCI.
Okay, who do we, do we need to draft a letter on behalf of this board to Lee County, asking for an explanation on this?
I'll make some phone calls.
Okay, but my deal is, is let's make, let's wrap this up, this is ridiculous. We all know where that FPL easement is, let's get this thing over here and make sure that they clean it up, because they're obviously doing it for some reason, because they're going out there right now and clear-cutting it and taking down all the exotics, so they're doing what we would expect them to do on that side, but on the other hand, if we have to have that survey, let's get the survey and explain to them why, and then the other part of it is, is if that whole thing, 136, 140 acres is a park, the whole thing, not just the trail, but the whole thing is a park, we need to know that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Right away to right away.
See, I don't think there are, I think there are two distinct, based upon recently reviewing some documents, I think there are two distinct items, because the DRI requires that they provide a paved bike path to extend the length of the FPL easement within the boundaries of the district. And it's the whole thing, and then there's minutes from the board meeting from '93, where there's a discussion about the issue about whether or not, is the size of the linear park all the power easements, and some consultant said, "No." So, I mean, it's, there are two different issues that need answers, I agree.
The issue is, we've got about 100 acres missing from the last DRI.
I think it goes through your yard.
Is it tax exempt?
I will check on, I will call DRI.
Let's check this and wrap this up, because they're moving along doing their stuff, but they're going to have to get us the other bit up. I want to answer this park deal real quick, Mike.
But that also gets back to the issue about them, they, WCI and I, wanting the district to take title to that property under the FTL easement, and if there are deficiencies from compliance requirements of the DRI development order as to pavement, as to park areas, the district's going to be tagged with that, and that's another one of my concerns. the district's gonna be tagged with that, and that's another one of my concerns, that...
We have irrigation issues that are essential, that we have access to that FPL easement.
We have, but there, I think...
We need that easement over in our property, in our control.
No, but I believe also, we have an irrigation main, there were plans years ago for an irrigation main through that, I'm trying to remember.
A main going through, but that's not what I wanna use it for.
Well...
We gotta be able to get water.
You better, you better take into consideration that, uh, Mr. Jim back there has got people riding ATVs in that, uh, easement in it. We take it, and it's, then it's gonna be our problem.
Hopefully not at three, hopefully not at three and five in the morning when we'd be discharging the water.
Two in the morning.
Two in the morning.
Yeah, and one of the difficulties, quite frankly, with the FPL easement, is that FPL has the right-of-way use, they have their easements, and they have been, I'll call it persnickety in the past, under certain circumstances. And there are, there's one covenant of use agreement that's in the public record that limits what can be done. Uh, there's another covenant of use agreement that's referenced in a recorded document, but it's not recorded, so I'm trying to get a copy of that, which also will explain, have better ideas to the constraints that can answer that question, how we can, if we wish, to discharge water for irrigation purposes.
Anyway.
So that, and again, that gets back to...
Let's get the answers to these questions.
That gets back to what I, you know, would like to get from WCI and Lennar.
And are you finished, Tony?
Yes, I'm so sorry, yes.
Couple other ones for Tony. Has anybody heard from Port Line?
I've not.
They haven't cashed a check?
Didn't check.
Steven, abuse.
I haven't checked, but I can't.
Let's verify that. Uh, the last one is, we have the letter from Lennar, when are we gonna discuss that?
I don't know, I mean, it's up to the board.
Since it's a legal issue, are we gonna do it now, or?
It's not on the agenda.
Well, I'll tell you, I don't wanna kick, after reading that letter, I don't wanna kick that down the road.
And that really would be part of Casella wanting to correct.
If you wanna handle it, then that's fine, it just, it needs, it needs to be discussed.
And copies should be made available for the public if they want to, who else has or does not have that letter.
That's everything I have for Tony.
Okay. I'm gonna request a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Be back in five.
Let discussion be part of five B.
That's, I guess that's what we're gonna do.
It could be.
In five B.
Yeah, I guess that's what we're gonna do, yeah.